Madam Attorney, Welcome.
Councilman Perkins Destin. Councilwoman Questa.
Here.
Councilman Torres.
Here.
Councilman Keenan.
Here.
Councilman Stan.
Here.
Councilman Goldman.
Here.
Councilman Mazza.
Here.
President Protan Gonzalez.
Here. We have seven presidents. He steps to the prayer for the ladies led by Councilman Torres.
Almighty God, as we legislate for our religion in a strong sense of justice and fair play for me and all that I do, above all, we seek out their own will. Give us the strength to follow it regardless of our own decisions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the Lord from which he stands, my nation and my God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we move on to public speaking, I'd like to first, particularly to the benefit of those that were not here at the last meeting, congratulate our primary winners from last Tuesday. Everyone worked very hard, residents have spoken, and just want to wish everybody the best of luck. We will move on now to public speaking. Any taxpayer resident who wishes to address the council, you can do so at this time. May they pass the name of your right to record this.
I'm reading the lawsuit with thirty-six rung minutes.
Moving my head a little closer.
This is another board of education election. I want to give you have candidates running. After talking to a candidate last week, something did not seem right on what I heard. I heard that some, I heard that some are running for the wrong reason and there's some children that are on the south. You have candidates that are running because they think that if they want a further deposition in the city hall for the Board of Education, getting family members a job. If you look back on the candidates that are members of the city in the Board of Education, either they were given a position or further deposition for family members to get a job. They decided to come both sides of the fence. The board of education does it and so does the city. Then we have candidates that did themselves a title in the newspaper in community act. But as I recall, I never seen them in rallies or villages when the census murders were going on. Then I hear some of the same words, "I always wanted to run because I do have concerns." But not once do, for the past twenty-eight years, have our senior candidates had a board meeting, testifying, and training, or press conference that we held on the launch camp. Then they said that we did not run in the past because they have children in the school system and that they did not have any legal questions. My children were attacked, but that did not stop me from fighting for the other children in the school system. I am appalled to hear that people are running on the expense of our children to further a better position within the city and the Board of Education than once. They are likely to not only their children and the civilian assembly. Also, I would like the city council to write a letter to the archives from Mr. Lomigas using the plastic document as political use. Mrs. Lomigas was running for the city council seat and he's been charged by posting his signs on the church's fences. And which I believe that that was why Mr. Goldman was not able to use the plastic document holding his name in the church because it was said that he was using it as a political stamp. But we have pictures that prove that Mr. Dastalde Miggas posted his signs on the fence. So I think that he should not be able to use the church for his overall meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Any other taxpayer resident who wishes to address the council at this time? Once again, please step up a little. We are naming our right to record this.
David Johnson, I could be spot on. Congratulations, right? Everyone else, give everybody one of those. This is just a very small matter. It's not something, it has to do with the control laws now. It's just, it's not against, it's just an observation of this one. I have an action from there to Frank, it looks like copies of, is that all right?
Yeah, there we go. I have five copies and I just highlighted the person.
All it is is that on section five seven, I just highlighted briefly, there's a requirement that landlords must register their buildings annually, which well understood, this is not just on my town, on what landlord I've been there for three years where he's great. He's had other residents on my street, he was a kid, he was a manager, he's a community manager, he has to do it. And the problem is that I called downtown, this was on a Christmas, they worked very hard down there. So the point was, if the landlord doesn't comply with registration of tenants, then he will call forward complaining, writing to have a letter go out saying he's not complying. And my point was, I think the version number ten, and I don't think that's what the spirit of it says. Between a lady on the street who was having trouble with the landlord and then she said, you know, there are everything, no.
Okay, it's tested, thank you.
Congratulations.
We can have an appropriate department, you know, follow up with that.
Right, but it's not against, it's not the spirit of it.
Again, aren't you there?
Right, thank you.
Any other taxpayer resident who wishes to address the council, you can do so at this time? Once again, any other taxpayer resident who wishes to address the council, you can do so at this time? Seeing none, I close the public hearing portion. And we will move on to public hearings.
Orders number forty-four sixty-four. Authorize the execution of an access agreement with El Dorado Development Group, Grandford, New Jersey, to complete soil warranties at six oh one six oh nine Division Street and six oh two six thirty-four Progress Street necessary for the design of the Progress Blood Control Project.
You heard the reading of orders number forty-four sixty-four. Is there any taxpayer resident present that would like to speak on orders number forty-four sixty-four? Once again, is there anyone present that would like to speak on orders number forty-four sixty-four? Seeing none, I close the public hearing on orders number forty-four sixty-four. With the consent of my colleagues, I will dispense with the reading of the petitions and communications and reports of city officers and move on to ordinances on first reading.
Orders number forty-four sixty-six. Amendment, Chapter thirteen, point sixteen, point one twenty, one thirty, one forty, one fifty, one sixty, and one seventy of Code of the City of Elizabeth entitled "Super Service Systems", specifically to implement a new sewer utility tariff designed to set your sewer rates effective August one, two thousand fourteen, and to augment the language thereof.
You've heard the reading of orders number forty-four sixty-six. What is your pleasure?
Move the order to provoke, Mr. President.
Move the second. Are there any comments?
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman.
I, let me a second. I actually read the information over the weekend. Unfortunately, I see there was a twenty-five percent decrease in the customers which are served with one-inch pipe and above deal. I see also that the, any others, five-eighths or three-quarter meters inch meters pipe that feeds into the meters, there was no rate increase, any other rates in which, those rates are pro-legal settlement, so that's one. And this should be effective August whatever. I need to get more information. I know we had a meeting. So at this time, I do not like, I don't feel comfortable to vote in favor, but neither to vote against, but I would like to excuse myself. And then while I have all the information that I need, then I will decide to vote accordingly to the information that we receive. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, just so we can be clear, at the last, our general meeting, Councilman would explain to us, like it was explained to us at the settled agreement, that that rate increase is only for commercial properties, there will be no increase for residential residences. Roll call.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedani.
Aye.
Councilman Goldman.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Excuse me.
President Protan Gonzalez.
Orders passed on first reading, six ayes.
Orders number forty-four sixty-seven. Authorize the establishment of a personalized handicap parking space for Jerry Shelsing, seventy-three West Hill Avenue.
Heard the reading of orders number forty-four sixty-seven.
Move the order to provoke, Mr. President.
Move the second. Are there any comments? Roll call.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedani.
Aye.
Councilman Goldman.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Protan Gonzalez.
Aye, seven ayes. Orders passed on first reading.
Orders number forty-four sixty-eight. Authorize establishment of a personalized handicap parking space for the Leelac four-eighth road cat street.
You heard the reading of orders number forty-four sixty-eight. What is your pleasure?
Move the order to provoke, Mr. President.
Move the second. Are there any comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedani.
Aye.
Councilman Goldman.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Protan Gonzalez.
Aye, orders passed on first reading, seven ayes. Public hearing and further consideration of the foregoing ordinances shall take place at the city council meeting to be held Tuesday, June the twenty-fourth, two thousand fourteen, at seven thirty P.M. We will now move on to ordinances on final passage.
Orders number forty-four sixty-four. Authorize the execution of an access agreement with El Dorado Development Group, Grandford, New Jersey, to complete soil warranties at six oh one six oh nine Division Street and six oh two six thirty-four Progress Street necessary for the design of the Progress Blood Control Project.
You heard the reading of orders number forty-four sixty-four. What is your pleasure?
Move the order to provoke, Mr. President.
Move the second. Are there any comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedani.
Aye.
Councilman Goldman.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Protan Gonzalez.
Aye, orders passed on final, seven ayes. We will now, uh, any motion for suspension?
So moved to the table.
Seconded, roll call.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedani.
Aye.
Councilman Goldman.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Protan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Letter dated June tenth, two thousand fourteen, from the Director of Health and Human Services. Requesting authorization for the proper city officials' text committee and all documents approved to enter into an agreement between the City of Elizabeth and King University to conduct a youth appreciation dinner recognizing the hard work and accomplishments during the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen full year in the amount of twelve thousand four hundred and seventy-four dollars.
You've heard the reading of the resolution. What is your pleasure?
Move the resolution to provoke, Mr. President.
Move the second. Are there any comments? From what I understand, the other side, this event will be taking place next week, Thursday. Thereby, we will not have time to vote on it, so that creates an emergency, so we can move forward and then we can have this youth appreciation dinner by the office tables. Roll call.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedani.
Aye.
Councilman Goldman.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Protan Gonzalez.
Aye, resolution passes, seven ayes. We will now move on to new business.
Authorize fiscal year two thousand fourteen municipal budget transfers in the amount of three hundred forty-two thousand eight hundred dollars. Introduce and approve the Elizabeth Avenue Special Department District Fiscal Year two thousand fifteen budget in the amount of three hundred twenty-five thousand three hundred twenty dollars.
You heard the reading of the resolution. What is your pleasure?
Move the resolution to provoke, Mr. President.
Move the second. Are there any comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedani.
Aye.
Councilman Goldman.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Protan Gonzalez.
Aye, resolutions passed, seven ayes. Public hearing and further consideration to be held Tuesday evening, June twenty-fourth, two thousand fourteen.
Authorize cancellation of unexpended state fiscal year two thousand fourteen sewer utility operating fund account to outlay and joint meaning investments in unique counties appropriation balances in the amount of two million dollars in credits aimed to the sewer utility operating fund surplus. Certified by the preliminary two thousand fifteen state fiscal year tax levy for the second half of calendar year two thousand fourteen in the amount of one hundred forty-one million seven hundred twenty-one thousand six hundred fifteen dollars sixty-two cents. Except bits received at the public assignment sale of tax sales certificates in the total amount of two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Authorize cancellation of emergency medical service opening accounts receivable in accordance with the recommendation of the city ordinance.
You've heard the reading of the resolution. What is your pleasure?
Move the resolution to provoke, Mr. President.
Move the second. Are there any comments?
President?
Councilman Mazza.
As far as concerned, the emergency medical services that relate to the annual service of ten million dollars, are we trying to abolish?
Those are dead stuff, we're not able to be collected, Councilman.
Okay, but do you know the exact amount? Is that technically a change?
That's correct.
Is there any other way that anybody that has additional brains to find out how to collect revenue? We give the service and other some of the people are actually abusing our system. Might be there's a way that people collect or depleting some other area which benefits from our government, from our state, or from our federal in order to pay back what the city serves those people in order to go to the hospital. Because ten million dollars, it's a lot of money. And maybe we should find a different way to follow through those people, wherever they are, to collect it five dollars at a time, ten dollars at a time, whenever they can make a payment. I'm sure they probably did by just sending a register letter and you get it back. Sometimes we do have a problem, Mr. President, in your public votes in the recent election. When you send something out, it comes back to you undelivered because a lot of the new mailmen that we have, sometimes they didn't even know the amount that they do it, they return it back to the sender. People that are leaving at a particular location come back undelivered or unknown, which is, you know, anybody can make a mistake. For ten million dollars and above, it's a lot of money. Did you say, let's forgive them, you know? And if you do that, that encourages people to, to pay the bills and say, well, guess what? Seven years from now, they're gonna forgive you because then I'm gonna go for collection. Or, you know, might be you hire somebody that will be the job to do on a daily basis just to go and collect and find where these peoples are. So something to look into it because, you know, ten million dollars is ten million dollars, Mr. President.
Any other comments? Yes, Councilman, yeah, I need to feel, we all had the same sentiment when we looked at that last week. It was brought to our attention and raised some of the same issues and concerns at that time as well. So we'll start looking back, but it was told to us that these people are just people who just cannot afford to pay and they've collected what they can to date and as a result, that's why, you know, they're doing this. So, but we'll certainly send that message back and talk together.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Roll call.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedani.
Named to the two thousand fifteen state fiscal year tax levy. Aye, certain things.
Councilman Goldman.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Named for the preliminary two thousand fifteen state fiscal year and named for the public assignment, I mean, the emergency medical services, Mr. President. Yes, we have.
President Protan Gonzalez.
Aye, all resolutions passed.
Authorize the void contract to Western Insurance Bond Company of South Dakota through the agency of Grandford Hughes Palmer Associates and to provide policy and insurance coverage within this court judges and the entire municipal court personnel for the periods September one, two thousand fourteen to September one, two thousand fifteen at the manual premium of one thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars. Adopt a resolution acknowledging receipt of the preliminary study designated certain portions of the Marsav and corridor as an area in need of redevelopment and authorize the planning board to complete the preliminary study. Authorize void contract to Ben Chamber Associates, Inc., in Paton, New Jersey, for the purchase of playground and park equipment for the renovation of public works departments for the period May twenty-seventh, two thousand fourteen, through May third, two thousand fifteen, and cost not exceeding one hundred thousand dollars. Authorize void contract to David Weber Oil Company, Carlstadt, New Jersey, for the purchase of oil oil lubricants, oil streaks, and hydraulic oils for various departments for the period May twenty-seventh, two thousand fourteen, through May twenty-nine, two thousand fifteen, and cost not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars. Authorize void contract to Independence Constructors, Bridge Oil, New Jersey, for cleaning inspections monitoring of oil oil separators and above and underground tanks in various locations and apartment fire level protection compliance for the period May thirty-first, two thousand fourteen through June thirty, two thousand fourteen, at a cost not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. Authorize void contract to S.H.I. International Somerset, New Jersey, for the renewal of the verse nine one one system for the police department for the period May sixteen, two thousand fourteen, through May fifteen, two thousand fifteen, in the amount of thirty-six thousand dollars.
You've heard the reading of the resolution. What is your pleasure?
Move the resolution to provoke, Mr. President.
Move the second. Are there any comments?
The President, Councilman Mazza, pertaining to the Marsav corridor. I was reading in the paper that I received, there are the numbers, address for acquisition. Eventually, we are going to appropriate property in order to do the accomplishment for the Marsav corridor to bring, you know, for the future, to develop this stretch from King University all the way to the train station. Are those property going to be gone for appropriation or what's happened?
Could you repeat the question? Wasn't clear.
And the Marsav corridor, in the paper that I received, it mentioned a sequence of about ten, fifteen addresses that the city will properly take over by property of domain for whatever benefits use of our community or whatever. Whether it's gonna happen or that will be part of the study. If you give me a moment, I'll get to paper because I know I like.
The question, that's gonna be part of the study, that whole area?
No, no. The city is also looking forward in order to make this project to appropriate people's property along the way from the train station all the way down to King University, that everybody.
Well, now, we gotta know until the study is done, but you know.
It says in the letter. Let me get this letter. I mean, it's not in my works, so Mr. Councilman, not doing anything.
Mr. President?
I just wanted to add, I know.
Councilman Sedani.
Thank you. Councilman Mazza is looking for the paper. From my understanding, there is season, it's mostly studying that you're doing, just evaluating process and which that you saw in particular, but I haven't heard any specific details. I don't think there are specific details that is quite possible.
What's that, say, preliminary study?
Well, Mr. President, being that there's no emergency, I make a motion to table until we clarify at this point because it's very important. Once we vote, it's gonna affect quite a bit of people, if you don't mind. The fourth board councilman is in your area. If you'd like to second my motion, I'm sure this would be table for future day, we can put it back on again.
Mr. President, personally, like I know it's a study, I'm a person, Councilman Mazza as well. It's okay, we could see it, so I'd like to make a motion for it to be.
Okay.
If there's nothing urgent.
Well, the only thing is that suddenly delaying the project as before. Councilman, since you're a board with that, if you'd like to do, any move to it?
Sure, I'm sorry, motion just to have, if you, if there's nothing that you, if you feel that this would prevent it.
I, I considered my motion, I was hoping, I was over everything at the last meeting and we just wanted to hopefully move forward with that whole project at this point.
Yeah, but Mr. President, you're talking about all that people's life is a narrow property that will be affected by. You know, before that, you really consider, I wish that would be your property being taken over by the city. I'm not even liking, Mr. President. So let's see what we have to do and get all the proper permission before we go on for something that may make you change or a measure people are gonna be affected by, drastically, so.
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman Questa.
I have a lot to say, I disagree, however, on the notion of tenure, there's been no discussion.
All right.
Since the motion has been seconded, we have to take the vote, otherwise, there's people out.
It was a motion that you had seconded? It was not seconded.
I thought you made a motion that you had seconded.
You did second, Councilman Sedani. Why did you motion? You made a motion.
I, Councilman.
Mazza seconded it, okay.
I don't know.
Okay.
If you need a question, you second.
Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Is. President, Councilman Goldman.
I believe, was Councilman Mazza made a motion first.
First, correct.
And I believe Councilman Sedani was seconded, Mazza was seconded. So there is motion to vote.
I was always, it's a lot, I was clear, Councilman Mazza made a motion, Councilman Sedani seconded. That's good, okay. All right, roll call.
Councilman Questa.
No.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedani.
Aye.
Councilman Goldman.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Protan Gonzalez.
Aye, resolution D.D. passed, six ayes.
To table.
To table. Okay, any other comments on some of the other resolutions? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedani.
Aye.
Councilman Goldman.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Protan Gonzalez.
Aye, all resolutions passed.
Authorize the void contract to Mall Chevrolet, Cherry, New Jersey, for the purchase of one two thousand fourteen Chevrolet twelve passenger van for the fire department at a cost of twenty-three thousand forty-six dollars twenty-six cents. Authorize adoption of a resolution that would pre-qualify Louis Signet CPA Associates, Opti Plains, New Jersey, who submitted a request for qualifications as prospective auditors to serve the city during the two thousand fifteen state fiscal year. Authorize adoption of a resolution that would pre-qualify Conestens Patrick Cole Whistler, Tinek, New Jersey, and Parker McKay, Mount Laurel, New Jersey, who submitted a request for qualifications as prospective bond attorneys to serve the city during the two thousand fifteen state fiscal year. Authorize the adoption of a resolution that would pre-qualify Powell Capital Markets in Roseland, New Jersey, Acacia Financial Group in Martin, New Jersey, and the Financial Group LLC, Jersey City, New Jersey, and Phoenix Advisors for in town, New Jersey, who submitted a request for qualifications as prospective financial advisors to serve the city. to serve the city during the 2015 state fiscal year. Authorizing adoption of a resolution that would pre-qualify Allo, Allo County Zedlaw School, New Jersey, Gloria and Kenny LLC, Attorney Zedlaw, Hoboken, New Jersey, Huma Law, Renard, Cranford, New Jersey, and Conestens Patrick Cole and Whistler LLC, T-Net, New Jersey, who submitted a request for qualifications as prospective property tax attorneys to serve the city during the 2015 state fiscal year.
You heard the reading of the resolution, what is your pleasure?
More resolutions for the president.
Move this second, are there any comments? See another roll call.
Council question.
Aye.
Council Torres.
Aye.
Council Keenan.
Aye.
Council Sedan.
Aye.
Council Gordon.
Aye.
Council Mazza.
Aye.
President Proton Gonzalez.
Oh, aye, all resolutions passed.
Authorizing the adoption of a resolution that would pre-qualify Stackville Union Stat LLC, Hoboken, New Jersey, Pat Joe, Kenton Park, New Jersey, Stanley J, Colonial, New Jersey, who submitted a request for qualifications as a prospective appraiser to serve the city during the 2015 state fiscal year. Authorizing void contract to Maria Chirino MDU, New Jersey, to provide sexually transmitted disease services for the period May 1, 2014 through April 30, 2015, and a cost not to exceed $50,000 unless further authorized by City Council. Authorizing void contract to Pedro Beckford MD Elizabeth to provide pediatric physician services for the period May 1, 2014 through April 30, 2015, and a cost not to exceed $80,000 unless further authorized by City Council. Authorizing approval of the fiscal year 2015 urban enterprise administrative budget in anticipated urban enterprise assistance funds in the amount of $298,190.16 and entered into an agreement with the Elizabeth Development Company for the administration of the Urban Enterprise Zone Program and the Urban Enterprise Zone Second Generation Funds for the period July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015. Authorizing proper city officials to submit a proposal to the New Jersey Urban Enterprise Zone Authority for the use of City of Elizabeth Zone Assistance Funds to provide funding in the amount of $260,249.60 for the commercial district security program to conduct walking police patrols throughout the business districts with the city providing a 20% match in the amount of $65,062.40 for a total project cost of $325,312 for the period July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015.
You heard the resolution, what is your pleasure?
More resolutions for the president.
Move this second, are there any comments?
Mr. President, I have a question pertaining to Dr. Maria Chirino for sexually transmitted disease services for the year May 1, 2014.
What's your question, Council?
$50,000. I would like to know exactly how many patients she actually sees, what kind of record she has for $50,000, if you want. And then I would like to get an answer pertaining to Pedro Beckford MD, did he have physician services? $100 per hour, if not, not exceeding $1,000, how many patients also this person sees?
Any other questions? That's it? Okay. Um, I hope, please ensure the Council has that information, thank you. Any other comments? Roll call.
Council question.
Aye.
Council Torres.
Aye.
Council Keenan.
Aye.
Council Sedan.
Aye.
Council Gordon.
Aye.
Council Mazza.
Now, I have two doctors, and yes, and everything else.
President Proton Gonzalez.
Aye, all resolutions passed.
Authorizing proper city officials to submit a proposal to the New Jersey Urban Enterprise Zone Authority for the use of City of Elizabeth Zone Assistance Funds in the amount of $1,450,107.21 for the Urban Enterprise Zone Second Generation Funds Financial Lending Programs Phase Eight for the period July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015. Authorizing proper city officials to submit a proposal to the New Jersey Urban Enterprise Zone Authority for the use of City of Elizabeth Zone Assistance Funds in the amount of $80,000 for pre-development funds control enable the Elizabeth Coalition to house the homeless, to expand their services to the homeless for the period June 10, 2014 through June 30, 2016. Authorizing proper city officials to execute a community development block grant agreement with United Youth in New Jersey, Elizabeth, with funds in the amount $5,000 to help cover costs for participation in Miss America Pageant in Atlantic City for the period July 1, 2014 until December 31, 2014. For the rest, proper city officials to execute a venue agreement with Wells Fargo Home Mortgage Division of Wells Fargo Bank, allowing Wells Fargo and Brand New Day to host event on Saturday, June 28, 2014, in council chambers to assist troubled homeowners with Wells Fargo mortgage. Authorizing proper city officials to execute all appropriate documents for the Union County Open Space Recreation and Historic Res station creating Union County Grant Funds in an amount of $250,000 for the purchase of 200 trees.
You heard the reading of the resolution, what is your pleasure?
More resolutions for the president.
Move this second, are there any comments? See another roll call.
Council question.
Aye.
Council Torres.
Aye.
Council Keenan.
Aye.
Council Sedan.
Aye.
Council Gordon.
Aye.
Council Mazza.
Aye.
President Proton Gonzalez.
Aye, all resolutions passed, so.
Authorizing void contract to Richard Brother Associates, Cranberry, New Jersey, to provide Phase Two archaeological services in connection with the Elizabeth River Trail Phase Two at a cost not to exceed $54,960 plus reimbursables. Authorizing change order number two to the contract ordered to Tom Ho Construction, MD, for the rehabilitation of the Veterans Memorial Waterfront Park at a cost of $3,421,386 to provide further soil remediation action required by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection at an additional cost of $500,000. Establish leads for the boarding of a property listed on Schedule A on Island City Clerk's Office in a total amount of $4,730.30. Authorizing mayor to execute an agreement with State of New Jersey to provide funds for the city's 2014 summer food nutrition program for the period July 7, 2014 to August 29, 2014, at no cost to the city. Authorizing mayor to enter into an agreement with State of New Jersey Department of Education sponsor management plan for the 2014 summer food service program, which will commence July 7, 2014 to August 29, 2014, at no cost to the city. Authorizing mayor to execute an agreement with the Elizabeth Board of Education to provide food vendor services in conjunction with the 2014 summer food nutrition program for the period July 7, 2014 to August 29, 2014, at no cost to the city.
Heard the reading of the resolution, what is your pleasure?
More resolutions for the president.
Move this second, are there any comments?
Yes, Mr. President.
Council Mazza.
At the Veterans Memorial Waterfront, the particular change of order number two, is the total cost of this change of order will be paid by the 90%. And reimbursement to the city, it was explained to us last Tuesday, Council, that as they were estimating, it came across some contaminated soil, and as a result, that's why this request is being made, and that they are applying for some sand and hoping to get reimbursement for that.
Good, thank you. Any other comments?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I would have to see that the city is moving forward in trying to hire a possible victim, these people as police officers. I think some might have done so bad, and I wish to get high water. Because anytime they're gonna hire a police officer to protect and serve around the city and well fashion, I mean, I'm happy to see that take place. So I'm gonna congratulate the administration for moving forward this project program. I can't wait for these police officers to be able to protect that city, thank you.
Uh, any other comments? Roll call.
Council question.
Aye.
Council Torres.
Aye.
Council Keenan.
Aye.
Council Sedan.
Aye.
Council Gordon.
Aye.
Council Mazza.
Aye.
President Proton Gonzalez.
Aye, all resolutions passed.
Authorizing proper city officials to execute all appropriate documents for the fiscal year 2014 COPS Iron Program Grant in an amount not to exceed $6 million to hire 15 new police officers establishing MCM parking spaces in front of the premises located at 103 Mary Street, 308 Spencer Street, and 566 First Avenue. Adopted resolution in support of New Jersey's Second Bill Number 1698 to establish international residential code requirements for fire sprinklers in one and two family dwellings and townhouses. Grant permission to the Morris New Town Business Association and ENG Productions to host their 11th Annual Columbia's Independence Day Festival on Sunday, July 20, 2014, with rain date July 27, 2014, on Morris Avenue from Sarah Street to Julian Place, Westfield Avenue between Horn Road Street and Harrison Street from noon to 9:00 PM, paid until midnight.
You heard the reading of the resolution, what is your pleasure?
More resolutions for the president.
Move this second, are there any comments?
Mr. President, there's a correction to be made. Uh, we need the address of 641-47. It's whose order, you want it? Instead of five or six, 566-47.
So that should be 641-47?
641-47. And the 566-47, I place them on hold. Okay, it's a little tight to have it.
Okay, correction, you know. Any other comments?
Mr. President.
Council Sedan.
I just wanted to make my comments aware that the city has received an updated letter concerning Columbia and the Independence Day Festival. I know that was one of the concerns that we had, that we had table at a certain point. It did come to us with the Morris Avenue Midtown Business Association letter, Ed. So we did receive that, and I know we've been working on addressing the other issues of the service that we do have moving forward. So just wanted to just let my colleagues know and update on that. I'm sure everyone was able to see the updated letter with the letter. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Yes, I received that letter in the last meeting. That was Council's question.
Mr. President, I will be supporting this resolution. Uh, but I just wanna say, perhaps repeat some of the comments from Councilman the fourth ward. Uh, I'm glad to see that the letter came in, uh, kind of the association, in conjunction with ENG Productions. Uh, some of us have met the organizers of this event because there have been a number of issues and concerns expressed by people in general, by the administration, and by the police department. In my opinion, from what I have heard, most of those issues have been resolved. However, I know that there are a couple of issues that are still pending. So I would encourage the organizers to continue working, city officials and the municipal department to ensure, uh, the biggest concern that we have, safety of the people participating in this festival. So I will support it, but I, but I, I urge the organizers to continue their initiative to, to make sure that this is a safe environment for people to find and have a good time. So there are a couple of issues that have been resolved yet, and I move forward to be part of the process. Thank you, Mr. President.
I very much.
Mr. President, on the $6 million, I think the councilman spoke before, I'd like to make my comments also. It's, I do agree with the fifth ward councilman, we should be hiring more police officers at the time of hours to do that. And our quality of life in Elizabeth is depending on the safety of the people. And the people in Elizabeth will more tranquil, more happy, more secure if they see visibility, if they see our radio cars around the city. Unfortunately, we do have a very shortage of men, so we hope to beef up this department more than 15 police officers. So it's a great thing that it's happened to our city, but I think we should be able to do more, thank you.
Any other comments?
Okay, uh, yeah, I agree with my colleagues regarding to the application for the council. Uh, the safety of our residents is paramount, I know, to all of us in each of our wards throughout the city. Uh, and certainly wish we could do more, and hopefully in the future, we will be able to do so. As far as the Morris Avenue Columbia Independence Day celebration, and I hope those issues do get resolved, but we love to celebrate culture here in our city. We have such a diverse population in the city of Elizabeth that we celebrate many cultures in Columbia. Culture is well, and this event has certainly become a staple here in the city of Elizabeth, and many come from all over to enjoy that festival. So I hope it can be worked out, and that it will be safe for not only the city residents, but all those that come from outside to take part in it.
Roll call.
Council question.
Aye.
Council Torres.
Aye.
Council Keenan.
Aye.
Council Sedan.
Aye.
Council Gordon.
Aye.
Council Mazza.
Uh, no on the fire sprinklers, and yes on anything else.
President Proton Gonzalez.
Aye, all resolutions passed. Okay, well, now, the commendations, are there any commendations?
Mr. President.
Yes, Council's stand.
Um, I just wanna, want to inform my colleagues and want to commend Captain Sebastian Halli from the Salvation Army. They've been with us for many, many years, and they've been a huge blessing to the city of Elizabeth. Um, they've been called to transition to another state, uh, end of this month. So just want to highlight them and just thank them and you have the city of Elizabeth for all the hard work here for us.
Thank you, Council. Give whatever information you're seeking. Any other commendations? Uh, the mortals, they have an idol chain developed, retired Elizabeth Lee Chee and state pistol champion, Maria Levecia, and Sabatino Spina. Are there any other mortals? See another less stand for one of the signs throughout.